Okay, it's now five, five thirty six, we'll return to the open meeting. Business items, new business. I have number one, Anthony Carlson, Sarah Britton, Jack's campaign managers.
I think yes, if you just go back.
Yeah.
Do you need?
You want us to podium or not? Here we hear you.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine, I brought, I brought, I have other tools to help.
This is gonna claim.
And I have. Oh. I do know, into the light we come.
Do we need this freight or can I?
That's great, my God.
That was, yeah.
I don't have our time. Seeing people on the screen.
Yeah. Now it is.
I was sitting here, Scott, too, so I didn't know, yeah, just saying.
We do one more?
Coral. Do you want to stand?
There we go, that'll be.
That's perfect.
Thank you. Let's get on the mic. I actually turned it off, because it sounds like there's a mic up here already.
It's okay, if you need it, yeah.
Perfect, awesome, I was waiting for the okay. So it's great to actually get to be here and then to present to you guys and talk to you about, you know, potential of, I'm exploring placing something on the November ballot for the library district. My name's Anthony Carlson, my colleague Sarah Britton Jack is over here as well. And we've been courted by, you know, a group who's standing up a campaign committee to actually lead an effort should such, should such one appear on the ballot. Now, my goal here today isn't, is not to convince you guys to make a decision one way or another on going to the ballot. That's fully your guys' choices of board of trustees, you know, to weigh the pros and cons of appearing on this November's ballot and to make a decision that you think is best for the library district. So I'm not here to try to do that for you guys today. I'll turn this mic back on. Is that better? There we go.
Yeah.
But what I do want to do today is I do want to provide, you know, my views and thoughts on what this November's electorate's gonna look like here and across the country, and provide any advice that I can provide to you guys with helping you make the decision that you feel is best for the library district. So first of all, this isn't a decision that we've derived at to this point of being this far along in the process that we've made with the ideas, just kind of pulling numbers out of the air and just kind of wishing and hoping that maybe the voters will support an effort that's been on the ballot. So over the past year, the library district partnered with a firm called WPAI Intelligence. It's a nationally reputable polling firm that does work for folks all over the country trying to seek election to office. Running ballot initiatives on the ballot, some of the examples of the work that they've done, for example, is they worked with Glenn Youngkin, the current governor of Virginia. They are actually instrumental to his campaign and being elected in Virginia. They've worked with organizations such as Las Vegas Raiders and trying to figure out their move from Oakland to Las Vegas. And so this polling data is, is data that I believe that we can fully take to the bank and trust and know that when we're seeing these, this data points that it is reflective of what the actual intentions and will is of folks in Pike's Peak region. And so just starting off and kind of digging into this a little bit, you know, one of the things that was, is particularly interesting to me is the actual public opinion of folks in El Paso County towards the library district. Typically, if you're elected officially, you're likely to break fifty percent on a score of asking people if they are supportive of you or your campaign. If you're a public institution, you're likely to give them to the sixths. And what we saw from this polling is over ninety percent of the people who responded to both of these surveys over two different pollers say they actually have a really great perspective and view of the library district. Specifically, if we asked them if the library district was an entity that should be protected and preserved in El Paso County, over ninety percent of the people who responded to that question in a four hundred and eight survey said that they believe the library is an important institution in El Paso County that should be protected. The second thing that was noteworthy, and just for those who may not be familiar with this, this poll is done in early March of this year. So this was done after the invasion of Ukraine, after the economy started taking a tremendous downturn. So this is fairly relevant data that is pretty relevant to the current circumstances that are facing our country and facing the economic environment that we live in. Seventy-five percent of the folks in that survey said that they believe they get good value out of the library districts for the resources that they provide, that the library district provides to the community. Once again, in this region, if you're a public institution, breaking fifty percent is pretty remarkable. Seventy-five percent, pretty much every public institution in this country is trading you and wanting to get those types of numbers of their own public opinion research. Furthermore, seventy-seven percent of the people said that they are satisfied with their experience using PPLD services. Once again, if you're a government institution, you want seventy-seven percent, you're not touching that anywhere else. The really interesting thing here, and this is one number that was really fascinating to me when you take it in the context with everything else that's in the survey, is comparing to the poll we did last September, it's the one that we did in March. One of the areas we did see a significant dip for a change in people's expectations and attitudes were, where people believe that their taxes are too high or too low or just right. And what we did see was that there was a twenty percent increase in forty percent of people thinking their taxes were too high to sixty percent of people thinking their taxes were too high. Now, one of the things to consider when you guys are looking at these numbers is this doesn't really reflect enough people, do people think their taxes are too high or too low? Because typical taxes were the exact same in September of last year as they were in March of this year. Really what these types of numbers and these country questions get at in a political poll is really trying to assess people's current economic status and how they feel like they're doing and whether it's easier or harder to make him speak than it was a few months ago. And obviously with, you know, the way the world was turned upside down in late February and the rising inflation we're seeing, it makes a lot of sense that people would be feeling a lot of economic pressure now that they didn't feel in September of last year. However, one of the fascinating things about that though is despite, you know, people's changes and attitudes towards their current tax base and whether the taxes are too high or too low, the support for the library district placing an initiative on the ballot and potentially going forward and asking voters for a tax increase, those numbers remain stable. And that was actually something that was really fascinating to me as somebody who looks at these numbers all the time. And I spent a good portion of my life looking at political polls and trying to understand and disseminate them. To have a community that says, sixty percent of the folks says, we feel that economic burden is too high right now, but we still support the library district and your efforts to potentially go to the ballot. To me, as somebody who's a political consultant and does this for a living, was, was pretty remarkable. And I think that puts the library in pretty unique space within government institutions in El Paso County and across the country. Because I guarantee you, citizens aren't willing to fund just everything that's put in front of them. They are very choosy and cautious about what they choose and best or hard earned dollars, especially in difficult economic environments. And so that is kind of what we're seeing and what I am seeing from a political environment here is, you know, number one, the polling does demonstrate that if you guys are going to the ballot, you know, nothing is for certain. I can't guarantee that you're gonna be successful in November. What I will say is economic and the societal environment right now isn't as rosy and positive as you would ideally like to go to the ballot in. But there's also a few recent changes here in the local state environment in Colorado that actually make me kind of more favorable towards twenty-two and a future election cycle. And namely, what that is for me is on July, on June twenty-seventh of this year, we had our primaries in the state of Colorado where the Democrats and Republicans both put forward their nominees for the general election. And what came out of that was especially on the Republican side, they put forth candidates that are gonna require very challenging elections this November. And what that actually means is now we're gonna have very competitive senate campaigns in this state. And what that actually does in a state like Colorado is now it's gonna drive turnout. What that means is whether you're Democrat or Republican in this state, you're gonna be making sure that your folks are turning out to vote this November. And what we know is that when we're in a competitive environment where there's gonna be high turnout, what that naturally does is it makes your electorate younger. And one of the key measures between success, especially on tax measures, and knowing that you have a good environment to win in, is knowing that you have a younger electorate. Because regardless of partisan leanings, younger people are more likely to support tax efforts than other folks that are, that you poll and, that you experience in an electorate. And so actually, while there are a lot of negatives that we can look at in this current environment, what I would say is when you take your polling data and combine it with an electorate that is actually rather stable this November compared to other states, when you compare it to November of twenty twenty-three, when only thirty percent of this community will turn out, and when you furthermore compare it to twenty twenty-four, when there's a lot of uncertainties about who's running for president, the national climate environment's gonna look like. Frankly, I'm somebody who likes to take the odds of the electorate that I know that is stable. And so from my personal perception, and this is actually validated by our pollster, WPI, I had a conversation with them earlier this week. They highly recommended that if you have the opportunity to go to a ballot, that this should be the year to do it. Because of the known quantities that exist, that there is no guarantees that our economy will be better. And even if you read economic forecasts, people are starting to say twenty twenty-three is most likely, if there's a recession, that it will start. And so for those reasons, my personal opinion on this matter would be if you have the opportunity to pursue something this November, that those known quantities and knowing that we have a stable electorate, knowing that you've had polling data that's been validated twice through two different, very different economic conditions in this region, are both indicating that there's a strong desire of folks in Pike's Peak region to have a vote on this issue. Would be that if you have the opportunity to do so, that my recommendation would be to go to the ballot. Now, I'm not telling you that to influence you in one way or the another. That is your guys' choice to make as a board, whether you feel like that's in the best interest of the library. But in my professional opinion, if you guys have the opportunity, I would take the shot this November. So with that said, that's my introduction, I do want to make sure that I'm available and that Sarah's available. If you guys have any questions, I want to make sure I'm answering those, so you guys feel like you have the full, full facts and information you need to make a, a decision about whether you want to take this first step.
Any questions?
So before we get to the vote, I was curious, because this was on the, on the agenda, if we had people wanting to make public comment about this, if we should hear from them before we actually go to a vote? Because the way the agenda is written actually has public comment afterwards. And so I didn't know if we should open public comment up. I didn't ever know.
Would this vote?
Okay, so we'll wait.
I would like to do.
That's kind of what I felt, is I would like to hear from people who, if, if they're only related to this, not like all public comment, but just related to this initiative, the intent to participate.
Anybody have any comments about?
There was one person that signed up, I am not sure what topic she would like to speak on, but that Fisher has signed up for public comment.
When I go find out, we're talking about this particular issue right now, if someone has a comment.
Is the comment about?
I'm not sure, but I can.
If anybody have any comments for Anthony and presentation he made about the information and the data that he was talking about? Anyone on the screen have any questions or comments they want to share with us right now on this, what Anthony's talked about?
I think.
That said, she is.
Yes, her comment is about the ballot initiative.
Okay, Beth. I think you're, there he is.
I just unmuted myself, am I good?
Yes.
Great. Um, I, I did have one other slight thing besides this, but it relates. So a couple of months ago, I had made a public comment and asked why the fines were gone. And John Spears, who was still there at the time, said to message him, which I did, and he's left, and no one's fault, no problem. But that was one of my questions, and related to that, to bring it back to this ballot initiative, obviously, I wasn't polled, because I think this is a horrible idea. I think this is just, I mean, people are facing grocery bills that are twice as much. And yet I mentioned open with, hey, you should bring back the fines, but there's a amount of personal responsibility here that I feel like is missing, that we've not had for quite a while because of COVID. And then at the same time, you're wanting to ask the taxpayers for more money. And it's not specifically from my understanding, and maybe I'm not as informed as I could be. But it's not that you're concerned about staff and their pay, you know, pay raising inflation ratios or anything like that, but that you just, it's just not clear. I mean, I love the library, I want to support the library, but I don't want to give you any more of my tax dollars. So that would be my opinion, and like I said, from the conversation just previous, obviously, I wasn't polled. And I'm not the only person here, but it just seems like this is not the right time to do this. The inflation is going on and on and on and on, and it's not stopping. So that's the last place that I would like my tax dollars to go. So that was all I had to say.
Okay, we're talking less than five dollars per household.
So still, still, it's, 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 if you look at the library budget, it's kind of ridiculous. I think that you should do a better job with the budget that you have. No disrespect to anyone there, but there was a lot of.
Okay, thanks, we appreciate your comments and certainly taking our advice.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions they'd like to share with us? I guess it's important to understand that the last time we had any type of support for the library like this was nineteen eighty-six. There's a large percentage of our, our staff that weren't even born in. There's four hundred thousand more people in, in Colorado Springs now than when this, this measure passed. So we're trying to support a, a population that's increased concretely, if we haven't got any increase in budget to help do that. And there, there are library requirements and parts of the city that have not been provided for, that how are we gonna get there from here? I mean, the bottom line is there's things we'd like to be able to do and continue with. And this, this increase is something that will help us do that. And that's the whole point, so.
With, with all due respect, yes, we've grown by four hundred thousand since then, but we've also added additional houses. And this is a property tax that as our, as our community grows, the revenue from property taxes also continue to rise. There's also accounting for, you know, inflation and assessed value through all of this as well, and so I, I feel like that's a, that's a fairly, because we haven't had an increase in our population has grown, I feel like it's a weak argument for why we need to do it now, because our income has also grown proportionally.
Anybody else have any comments?
I, I, I will say that I understand tax dollars are coming in. But you also have to understand that the needs of our population has grown as well, at a greater extent than the tax dollars bring in. I believe that back when I moved here, and I'll say nineteen eighty-six, my daughter was ten years old, and she's now forty-six. That's how long it's been since there's been a tax increase and for the library. And, I mean, we use, we have gone from books and mortar, mortar here to now, we have all these electronic mediums which are awesome for all of our constituents, but all of that is costing money. And it continues to go, grow and grow and grow. And the other thing is, if we would look at last year when our CFO did a presentation and did what would happen in the next five to ten years, we're not gonna have what we even think we have now. Because things are going to get, there's gonna be more, things are gonna be more expensive and a lot of our, what you would consider affordable housing today is there, and they're young families with young children. And the library is about literacy. And if we build good people, learning mechanisms, and we have them in place, our whole city's gonna be, we're all gonna benefit from it. It's not just a few, it's all of us, from the young ones to the old ones. So I feel like if we don't move forward with this, what we're saying is, in the end, we're satisfied with what we have, and we will probably have to cut things. Because there won't be money to continue what we have, much less build.
And I right now, we're seeing cost of everything go up.
I agree.
We are seeing everyone in our community is watching their investments decline. And they're being asked to tighten their belts, they're being asked to cut things out of their budget to make sure that they can continue to afford the things that they have. I believe it is incredibly disrespectful for us to come to them and say, we know that you're having to tighten your belts right now. We understand that things are tough for you in an economic sense. We understand that when you're having to drive all over town, you're, you're having to pay five dollars for a gallon of gasoline. But we want you to pay us a little bit more. We're not willing to make that same cut. We're not willing to, to make the hard decisions and, and go through that with you. You know, we say that it's only five dollars a month, but you know what? So, no, it's five dollars a month. And, you know, my family's not gonna lose any meals over the fact that, you know, sixty dollars a year. But it's also narcissistic for us to think that it is our, that we are the ones who deserve that sixty dollars. There are other people that are out there doing tax initiatives. If you look at, if you look historically, people don't tend to vote for every tax increase on the ballot. And we're gonna force them to choose between roads or libraries or public safety or teacher pay, et cetera. Those are all tax initiatives that are coming onto the ballot.
And that's every time, every time.
I'm not saying that it's not. What I'm saying is, right now, people will be even more choosy about what they, what they decide to, to push. I don't want to be the, because this is going to increase the load. We say we want sixty dollars a year, other folks are saying they want sixty dollars a year. Pretty soon, we're talking about families that are now having their tax bill increased by two hundred dollars every year. One of the biggest issues facing this community, if you look at the recent elections, what people were talking about was affordable housing. And what we're doing is making that an even bigger issue in our community by compounding that tax bill for these homeowners, for these young families that are trying to get in it. I personally don't want to be responsible for making young families that are living paycheck to paycheck, trying to get in there, choose between whether they feed their kids today or put gas in their car to get to work. That's not something that I'm willing to, to put up right now. I'm not saying that I'm against the, this initiative, what I'm saying is I'm against this initiative right now. I think if we waited, that, that would be, that would be better. And, and to the point that the recession would hit, start in twenty twenty-three, I feel like that's a really, if that's what we're expecting, then it's dishonest, that we go ahead and, and sign people up for a tax bill that they're gonna have a harder time affording next year. That's actually gonna cause us problems in the future, because we'll actually have fewer taxpayers, because they'll move to where it's gonna be more affordable. And so by passing this right now, we actually have a bigger problem than what we have today.
Debbie. Thanks. Um, I appreciate what you say, Erin, and I, I agree that there, there is a percent of the population that would find it a burden, and that would, that affects me too. I feel that. I also, though, think it's not, we're asking for your money. What we're doing is, as a community, I think we're deciding what kind of library district do we want? As a community, and we don't get the answer to that question if we don't ask. And so, um, one of the things that happens in an economic downturn is people use the library more. There's all kinds of research and data to support that. People use it for job training, people use it for starting their businesses. People use the library in lots of ways that if the library didn't offer those kinds of services, some people, a lot of people, would not have access to. So it also bothers me to think about potentially taking away access that some parts of our community depend on. And I, you know, honestly, I don't think it's necessarily up to us, sitting at the table, to make all the decisions about what the library needs to look like and what the community needs to look like. My personal view is that when a community comes together and invests resources so that it lifts up people who don't have the same advantages, that's the kind of community I like, and that's community, kind of community I want. But you know what? We, we might decide to put it on the ballot, and we might ask people, is this what you want? Do you want us to keep doing what we're doing? And they might say no. And so then we need to, at that point, say, well, maybe we're not doing what the community wants. So I, I don't, in any event, I don't look at us, at it as us saying, give us your money. I'm looking at it as us saying, we think we're a good investment for the community that pays dividends in helping people improve their lives. And if you agree, then make that investment with us. And if you don't, then don't. I mean, you know, I, I can tell you, and, and I thought a lot about this last night, I'd forgotten it until last night. But back, um, back in the eighties, when dinosaurs ruled the earth and there was no internet, I, um, I was unemployed, single and broke. And I was here, and I didn't have a network of people that I used to have to look for a job. Me, I had nothing. And so I went to the library and I checked out books on how to look for a job and how to write a resume. But you know what? I didn't have a way to type my resume. So what I ended up doing was going around to office supply stores, asking if they had an old typewriter I could rent by the week so that I could type my resume. And it was kind of humiliating to do that. And if I could have gone to the library, oh my gosh, if I could have gone to twenty-one C, if I could have gone and accessed the services that we have for people who are hunting for jobs or trying to improve their skills or help with resume writing, that would have made such a huge impact on me at that time. And we make those little impacts on lives every single day, but we don't see them because they're little. And, but they mean a lot to those people. So I guess my feeling is I want to keep making those impacts. And I don't want the roof to fall down, and I don't want our buildings to be in disrepair, and I don't want people to be uncomfortable when they're in there. So I don't see any other way except to ask people if they feel like that too. So I'll get off my soapbox now.
Thanks, Debbie.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments to share?
So just to, like, we're projecting that this is gonna cost us a half a million dollars to get it onto the ballot. That's what I've been told.
Yes.
Yes. Um, that is a huge investment, to be wrong. You know, I, I like providing those services, and Debbie, I think I told you, I've told several people in this room, you know, my career that I have today is the same story that you have. I lived across from East Library, I went there, I was looking for a career change, I checked out books, I taught myself new skills, and here I am. So I absolutely get it, and those are services that we already provide. These are not like, we're not throwing books out just because we're in a recession. We're not getting rid of computers because we're in a recession. Those are still services that will be provided to the citizens of El Paso County, regardless of whether this passes or not. My concern, looking at these numbers, I've, I've talked to a lot of people, we, we had pollsters come in with, with the school district. And we talked to them, we were polling roughly the same, we were about fifty-four percent, and we were advised, that's really not, not good numbers for you to be looking at. What, everything that I've talked to people is sixty percent, and if you don't have sixty percent on a ballot measure, you don't persist. I know District eleven, just last year, they were polling at seventy percent, and they lost by twelve votes. District eleven is a huge voting base within this county. We saw several tax increases fail last year. Five hundred thousand dollars, what, what kind of services could we provide? I mean, you, we all saw that list that, uh, to set out this, this, last night of items, and you know, I was thinking, as I was going through that list, I was thinking, what could we just go and knock off that's guaranteed wins for our community, for our facilities, with that five hundred thousand dollars? It's not the risk that this is right now, specifically when we're starting to look at what the economy is doing. Because, yes, this, this polling was done back in, in March, and as Mr. Carlson said, this sixty percent doesn't mean that they're paying too high, the, the tax dollars, the tax bill that they got did not change between September and March. But perception changed. Perception has changed even more now than it was then, because we're talking about the economic factor. So even this, this was at the start, this was before everybody's, for everybody's Bitcoin dropped, right? That they'd invested in, so, you know, I, I get that this is a snapshot in time, but we're even further down the hole than where this was then. And we don't know what it's gonna look like in November, and five hundred thousand dollars could do a lot of good in our community without that risk of failure, when frankly, I, I have very low confidence that this would pass in, in right now. And I just don't see that this is, this is the wisest use of our funds.
I think what I would add to that is that five hundred thousand dollar fee that you pay to get on the ballot stands regardless of whether there's a mic. there's a election, every election, you go next year, it's going to be five hundred thousand if you go in twenty twenty-four. It'll still be five hundred thousand dollars. And if I could tell you that you're going to win every election, I want to be sitting here in this room because I'd be running much for your elections. Um, because that's not a gift or a skill that anybody has. And so if you're waiting for the moment where you feel guaranteed you're going to win, there's never going to be a ballot that you feel qualified to go and pursue. But what this polling does do is it gives you a snapshot that this community is ready and eager to put something onto the ballot and have their voices set on it. Whether that's successful or not is up to the voters to decide. And it's also up to you as a board that when you're making decisions about the future of library services and programming, and if there's going to be cuts or any significant cuts back in programming, is that a decision that an unelected board should make or is that a decision that the voter should make? And to me, that's a decision that you guys have to make as a board. But what I can tell you, it's kind of fun doing this with Tom in the room because Tom does this for a living, uh, working upon data. Is that typically whenever you do polling on things such as where people feel like, um, you know, with economic factors, you honestly want to get that polling done as close to the shock as possible. And so we actually timed this poll unwittingly really well because in mid-March when we did this poll, it was right after gas was shooting up. It obviously shot up higher. It was right when folks were feeling the impact and feeling like, are we on the verge of World War Three? And so what we know about human behavior is humans are very quickly adaptable to current circumstances and environments. And people, while it's not a great economic environment right now, it's an economic environment that folks have adjusted to and are probably a little bit more comfortable with today than they were in March when everything was in upheaval. And we're feeling the immediate shock, uh, shocks of inflation, rising gas prices, a huge conflict in Europe. And so as somebody who looks at these polls, if you're waiting for a guarantee, you guys are never going to go to the ballot. If you're waiting for that opportunity and knowing that there's going to be, um, sunshine and daylight on the other side of it, in this world that we're living in today, you can't guarantee that that time is going to be next year, two years from now, four years from now, if I get it for now. And so I think perhaps one of the questions you may want to ask yourselves is, is this a decision that you guys want to make as a board? Uh, what does the future of this library look like? Or is it a decision that should be left to the voters of this county to determine what kind of library district and what kind of funding and support they want to provide to your programs and services?
Comments? Anybody else?
So I want to understand if we do nothing and we continue to move forth as we have been with the number of branches that we have, understanding that there is income that's coming in based on the growth of our community, however, taking into also consideration partners like Urban Renewal Authority and offsetting potential revenues for a pretty good chunk of time. You know, are we putting the library district in a place where then they have to think about what consequences it has for their team? You think about the intention for innovation, the expansion of opportunities through services and delivery mechanisms that are different from what it was in nineteen eighty-six. I'm, I'm not trying to repeat what you're saying, Debbie, but I do want to make the, ask a question of what would we lose, but then also make the point that we are moving at the speed of technology and not everybody has that access and opportunity. And the library is a means to be able to access that where you might not have been able to before. So if we are, we are trying to stay in a space of moving forward, supporting the community for the greater good. I don't believe there is ever a positive, like, right time for anything and we cannot predict the future. But I, I do want to acknowledge the fact that the number of innovations that have occurred that you may not even consider as an innovation, when you come into this building, when you access things online that are connected to the library. I mean, creating opportunities is what the library is about. Things like citizenship that people seek because they are coming from another country for war purposes, for a better future for their family, et cetera. The library opens that opportunity that wouldn't have happened otherwise. Things like English, like English as a second language, things like building different skill sets like culinary. These are things that the, maybe the average public does not understand the library offers. But the fact that it's available to advance and provide opportunity for individuals is something that we need to be able to speak about so that our greater public understands the value. It is not just books. While books are the main reason why libraries were created to seek and provide education and opportunity, it's the opportunity piece that I think we really need to be able to understand and focus on how we can then advance our entire community as a result. So that being said, if we were to continue thinking about the number of branches that we have across our community and knowing that there are deficits in some versus others, we've had to cut the number of hours and we've had to reduce the number of, you know, staffing. We can't even find staff. There are so many other factors at play. Right? So how are we creating, I guess, a, a space where we have our current staff, giving current staff the opportunity to say, okay, this is what we need to do and not have them make those hard decisions to say, oh, well, I guess we should not staff the teen resource center when that may be the only place that some young people have as feel safe. So I just, I, I look at it from that maybe, you know, other side, the whatever side that is just to take considerate, take into consideration what would we lose? Because I, I'm pretty sure there's a lot of shoestring budget types of things happening. And it's, it's not just the library. It is probably every, you know, entity. And, and we're all trying to do our best and because we appear like we can function, it doesn't mean that we're functioning well.
Just a question for me?
Yeah, it's a question for you. Sorry, that's a really long question.
We are just like, you know.
But I wanted to also share my thoughts.
I, I will do my best to use all my skills to interpret and answer your question, but no, it's okay. So first of all, I want to start with this fact that since two thousand twelve, PPLD has lost ground in pro-capita funding. Uh, slipping from the eighth to the eleventh out of thirteen when it comes to Colorado, like in Colorado. Um, and as my two senses here that someone who is not originally from, uh, this country, but I call myself a proud American because I made the choice to become American. And one of the important things about this country is a democracy. And I believe democracy in such a way, and that's, I'm also talking, looking at everyone. So that democracy is, to my understanding and what I experienced in my life, that's the voice is given to people to make their choice. Um, that's my two cents about that. And I never want to experience, uh, um, certain, uh, circumstances in my life or my kids to experience that um, we as a country lose that sense of value of democracy. To answer your question, Amina, um, I know that I had some conversations with, with all of you, the Board of Trustees. And also I'm looking on the screen because Debbie and Aaron, a lot of people are there. So I'm trying to make an eye contact with all of you. Um, the thing is that we as a library district, I don't believe we will be able to keep going with the current restricted funding, funding that we have, continue providing the services that we strive to provide. There's yes, and we do, and I agree with you that this, those decisions should not be fall on our staff members or even our library managers or our public service directors. That should be the Board of Trustees and Administration leadership team going forward. We will face time that we would need to make tough decisions. And we will, again, I, I, I'm very, it's very hard for me to say that. We're already getting a lot of requests even from our public sessions that we we were holding, that our community, they want us to be open longer. They want us to have libraries in many locations. And our explanation and my explanation is we do not have, we cannot do it right now. Yes, Mina, I don't believe in all of that, uh, Board of Trustees that we will be able to continue providing that. I know that also I was told that previously there were some creative decisions made, creative funding fund for some libraries. But I want to actually publicly and openly acknowledge that right now, twenty-one C library, when it comes to public services portion of it, we have thirty-nine staff. And again, that is not enough staffing. We get questions about that, why our studios are not open? Why your maker space aren't open? That library was open and unfortunately, some of the decisions were made. Uh, but like, again, our staff had to sacrifice. So that's where we are. And I, and again, I understand. I literally understand economic struggles. I understand that not only from the perspective of the United States of America, but I grew up in certain time of period in my time that it was hard sometimes to buy a loaf of bread, standing in a line after the Soviet Union collapsed when we had a voucher to go and get a loaf of bread. And it didn't that mean that time, it didn't matter what kind of family you were from. I do understand that. I do understand struggles, but also I understand that, that library is a place that where people can come and get resources and uh, my, uh, two senses here that we as a library district, we would need to uh, let and inform our community why we are making those decisions because we will face those tough decisions that include many. Um, but also my, uh, belief is that as some, as again, and proud naturalized American citizen, we do need, that would be my recommendation to the Board of Trustees that the voice need to be given to the people because that's this country was founded on. Um, and that's my two cents. And let them speak, uh, community members, if they want us to expand our services and what kind of library district they want us to see. So, um, I, again, I'm not going to provide the laundry list, all of the things that we might, we would need to cut. Uh, because I don't believe this is a platform or like actually space and, uh, right now. But that's a reality and I will, I will, I will be coming to the Board of Trustees and asking all of you to help us to make those decisions.
So just understanding that, considering the factors regardless, I think we have difficult decisions to make and
Yes.
and if we don't provide an opportunity to even consider, then that becomes on us to then figure out what we then need to reduce in budgets in order to move forward as a district.
Yes. And as a part of, uh, just as a Board of Trustees and, um, you are our governing board, board, and I respect your opinion. This is my recommendation, but whatever decision you make today and however you vote, we will implement that as a district.
So can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Because this is kind of, before I came on, but I know that there have been tips that have passed that divert revenue from the library district out. So if, my question is, how much revenue are we, how much revenue are we pushing in that direction? That, that we are not getting, that we're now asking the taxpayers to make up for the decisions that we made previously that put us in.
You mean this?
The trustees that voted before.
Uh, Lance, I'm sure you were here. Do you remember that amount?
So if I'm not mistaken, my grant is scheduled about a year and a half ago that showed that with the current, with the current projects from Urban Renewal, it's about seventeen million. Over the, during the course of the twenty-five year periods that those projects are in play. We actually have some people from Urban Renewal who might be able to correct, provide more accurate numbers, but, but that's what I seem to recall.
You know, I, understanding that and, and hearing that, it's a big number, right? Like that could have gone to different investments, but if we don't also, if we do not consider how we work together as an effective partner in order to get projects like this in place, we provide stagnant growth for our broader community. So I mean, these are, it's this push-pull of, there is necessary advancements that have to occur that then offset something, yes. And also, there also needs to be this understanding that we, again, we live in this community, we believe in the, the space, we love it for whatever reason. We need to also consider why we should continue to invest in this space that we live in. Oh, Jariah has an answer.
No, I, I, I was just going to add, um, so I don't have the exact number, Aaron, uh, for you, you know, on that, we could certainly get that for you too. I, I will say, um, the, the word, that word probably isn't the best use of words for it because the project's not going to happen without the funding. So when we look at these, there's a gap in place. The, the, with the type of projects that we're doing, the public infrastructure that we're building, we're not, we're not, they're not going to happen unless we have broad support from every board going through them. You guys didn't have that say pre-two thousand sixteen. That was all handled through city council. Up to this point from two thousand sixteen forward, uh, the library has been supportive of those projects, but they have not generated uh, really a whole lot of increment even for the developers. We've got projects in two thousand eighteen that haven't generated a dime yet. Uh, so they haven't diverted. The other thing I'd add is that these projects that we build in bring in other projects around them and they become attraction points for new housing, new businesses, et cetera, which is growing the pie for everybody in the tax district. Whether it's the library, whether it's the school, whether it's the county, et cetera. So that's the only comment I want.
That's great. So we're expecting as these projects get completed, increased revenue coming from those projects.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's great. I like increased revenue through natural.
Six hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year.
Sure.
And I, the fact that, that particular issue, the fact that the library board is actually aware of what's happening and is a part of these conversations is the positive aspect that's occurred as a result of the legislation change. So again, like the library didn't even have a say
Sure.
before. So I think that's a positive move.
I think it's great that we're expecting increased funding coming up from those projects. That's great.
Any other comments or questions? All right, Anthony, thank you.
Aaron?
Aaron?
No.
Okay. Anthony, thank you very much. Appreciate you providing information. Next item is, uh,
I move that the Board of Trustees approve its intent to participate in the general election of twenty twenty-two. In the twenty-two general election.
Can we clarify exactly what that is? You may know what it is, but not everybody. So an intent means that.
Should we get a second on record before?
Second, go here a second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been, been moved, seconded. Any discussion?
All right. So intent means that as a board, we're planning on having an initiative on the ballot for twenty twenty-two. That does not mean that the board is going to do it. It means that we're intending to. It notifies, it notifies the clerk's office that we are planning on participating.
Right, and the deadline for notifying now, the twenty-ninth of this month. So, so that's why we're, we're making this, this vote right now. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Um, should we go person to person? Or do you want to do this together all at once?
We can do it individually if you'd like.
To me, this is a big decision. Yeah, we'll call.
Okay. All right. Aaron, Aaron, so?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Scott?
I will say no, uh, for a few reasons. One is, is the, the economy as it is today. Another reason is, is as far as, um, I've been told, we will not have any support from council or the commissioners at this point. So that's a big decision.
Okay, Debbie?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Yes.
So you're going to be the deciding vote after this?
Okay, I will. Yes. So motion passed. We'll move on to the intent by the twenty-ninth of this month. We'll move on to the intent by the twenty-ninth of this month. Okay, moving on to correspondence and presentations, uh, any correspondence?
There is no correspondence.
Okay. Presentations.
Yes, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joy Walker, the executive director of Colorado Springs Urban Renewal Authority. Really appreciate you letting us come down here today to talk a little bit about our relationship to the library, uh, how we see that developing and really what the impacts of our new work projects, I think this speaks directly to some of your comments over there too. Um, the, we've always had a great relationship with the library at this point. Uh, really, this study that we were working on, uh, with a partner in the project, Tom Binnings of Summit Economics, uh, was started even before John Spears announced his intent to leave. This is something that we've worked on for a while. Um, it's in the world of thirteen forty-eight, which is the house building essentially allows uh, or, or essentially forces the issue to where we need to go to every taxing agency to ask for the budget, the increment to our projects. Uh, we've been very successful with that, uh, all the way up into this point, but I think reports like this are important. So we keep, uh, the library and the other districts updated as to what these impacts are. And I think even Scott, uh, a few years ago had made some comments that this was something that was needed. Uh, they're not easy to do. You gotta find extremely bright people to put them together. And I think, uh, for you, those of you that know Tom Binnings, uh, he is certainly one of those folks. Um, our urban old projects, uh, really in essence, and I, and I know I've been a little bit of a comment about this earlier, but we can't do these without the support of the taxing entities, period. Um, and it's not only some people saying, well, you know, maybe we set this one out and then other people, you know, participate. Uh, it still makes the projects extremely challenging. There's always drawbacks to them. Uh, and, and even if we don't get full funding on the project, some things absolutely have to be cut from them. Uh, we actually had a meeting with a pastor of the county, uh, on, on a project not too long ago, and there was a last minute adjustment at the dice and it cost the project about six hundred thousand dollars. So, and when you're talking about the projects that we're putting forward, strong public improvements, strong public benefit, and, and truthfully, uh, pretty fiscally conservative, because it puts those in public improvements on the developer's back. It really tells them, you need to build what you say you're gonna build, and then we're gonna validate that through a third-party engineer process and sincerely, uh, going through all those documents. If we feel like you've done your job and you feel like they're in line with, uh, proper costs, uh, then we'll allow that money to be reimbursed, but oftentimes it's eight years, nine years, sometimes ten years before these revenues really start to come in. So any developer that wants to do an urban project, they, they almost have to be a little, a little nuts and they'll have a little bit of love for the community, because, uh, they're heavy lips, you know, they're, they're heavy lips and they all involve, uh, different components. One of the projects that, uh, I won't steal Tom's thunder in this, but one of the projects that I really wanted to make sure we hit was University Village. University Village is a huge retail project, extremely successful, um, and really helped lead, uh, really helped UCCS and has really been a major game changer for the community. But more importantly, it's coming off of the Urban Renewal Authority, uh, in, in not, not so distant future. So those are revenues that are obviously gonna be coming to the library board, uh, to all the taxing did, or to the library itself, and to all the taxing districts. But also all the economic benefits that have been created from UCCS's growth. And that was really one of the major, the major issues with that urban renewal area is that we wanted to make sure that UCCS could continue expanding west, bringing new students, more programs, let's see the four champions, the economic benefits and the money that's coming from the library, even taking out what comes in through University Village has been, has been, uh, pretty, pretty sizable. Um, so with that being said, uh, I'll of course be here to answer any questions. Uh, I'd like to introduce Tom Binnings, just to go over some of his findings in this report, and of course, we'll take any questions from the board. Um, but at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Tom.
Thank you, Jariah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Um, thanks for having me. And just a little bit more background, I've been working on most of the major projects in this community for a number of years as an economist, an applied economist. And, uh, recently, in the last few years, uh, I moved with my wife down to Sedona, Arizona, where I spend about six months out of the year there, and the other six months in Pike Peak region. And, um, and I was asked about a year ago to serve along the Sedona Public Library Board. So it's, so I, and it's been very interesting. It's not something that I intended to do, but, and then when Jariah asked me what I thought about this kind of a project, I thought, oh, this, it would be fun, it would be great. So I'm at that point in my career, I'm doing things more for the fun. Um, but this one is certainly important and a, a number of applications. And so I, what we did here, the objective and the purpose of this was to really look at, you know, public library and urban renewal and look for areas of cross-impacts between the two. And, and really, in looking out to see if there's any work that's been done on this before, there is done. So this is sort of a case study on how libraries and urban renewal, uh, go hand in hand or have some conflicts, how all that works. The key questions that we're asking, what are the common goals, synergies, and where does conflict between the two emerge? And, uh, what is the financial and operating performance of C, of CSURA, Colorado Springs URA in the library district? So, you know, wanna kind of get a sense of how things have moved through time, and we decided to use, just because of data availability, uh, two thousand eight to two thousand nineteen, I wanted to cut it off before the pandemic, because the world's just been flipped upside down. And, um, and then we looked at, how might we, and so the really goal is how might the two entities move forward together in a mutually beneficial manner? Just kind of the project summary or the fundamental issue as I defined it and the, after going through, looking at a lot of different literature and, and data, and understanding libraries and urban renewal was that we have a changing, uh, social and informational emphasis from the physical world to the electronic world. I mean, we've been talking about that here earlier. And we also have the largest generational transition in US history anyway. And that is going to include a massive wealth transfer between generations in the coming twenty to thirty years. Uh, these realities demand that public libraries reinvent their business model to make high levels of visible value creation for their service areas. And as we all know, and as you were just discussing, there's always a shortage of resources, more resources are needed in just about every endeavor, but it's, and I think legitimately in this endeavor, you face. Urban renewal, on the other hand, is a process of creating value in blighted areas that have gotten that way over decades and sometimes take decades to renew themselves. Uh, the process faces the same challenges you face from a technological and demographic transition point of view. They must also attract private capital to renewal areas, and that's a key element that is so, uh, unique about urban renewal areas. It's sort of the classic trying to create the incentive to attract private capital into areas that otherwise would not do so in most cases. And, um, and so that's, that's a key element, and they do that through the tax increment financing, which needs the alignment of the various taxing entities to support the effort. So without it, uh, that if the TIF is not forthcoming, urban rule, urban renewal does not necessarily occur. Property tax base continues in its previous stagnant position and can even decline further. That's the definition of blight in that regard, and now those conditions persist. So looking at an overview of urban renewal, just, I'll add to it that, you know, think of cities, and I've, basically, I'm an applied urban economist, I've been studying cities my entire career. And cities, when they develop new and greenfields, it's typically on the outskirts of town. And by definition, new development always costs more than existing real estate. And so you have a higher cost, which attracts hiring of people, hire, uh, revenue businesses. And so that's where the action goes. And over time, as cities grow and expand outward, then the older neighborhoods get, start to cater to moderate income and sometimes lower income and sometimes no income, okay? And so that's sort of this natural progression of, not in every case, not in every neighborhood, there, you know, there are a lot of caveats there, but as a general progression. And so that's the role of urban renewal is to reinvent areas and cities that have experienced that decline. Uh, the Colorado Springs Urban Renewal Authority, their mission is to encourage private investment and reinvestment, which restores targeted areas with strong community benefits while strengthening the tax base of the whole city. They have a wide range of projects, including residential, interstate interchanges, commercial, public art development, and reinvestment. And you can see on the map, uh, the different location of the urban renewal areas. Currently, they have fourteen active projects. An overview of public libraries, which is really a kind of new to me, relatively new, and, but equally if not more fascinating because of the history of public libraries. Here you see all, each one of the dots on the map is a public library in the US. It pretty much parallels the density of population throughout the US. But public libraries from an economic perspective are a public good, which means my use of the library doesn't prohibit your use of the library. And so we all get to benefit from that public good. Um, from economists typically will value things based upon market dynamics or often use that. And so in this case, it's what is the market value of a set of goods and services that people get uh, from a public library versus going and buying that somewhere else, and a lot of people couldn't buy it. Uh, it just will not fit into their budget. And we do see libraries that tend to be more oriented uh, or the highest propensity of use of public libraries for people of modest need, more modest needs. So it means a lot more to them. There's a concept of contingency value that says, how much is a community willing to pay to have a library? That's your fundamental question with a valid issue. Or even more so, what would you take to get rid of a library? And that's, that's an interest, it's always more, people want more to get rid of a public asset. But for me, I think the most powerful thing and why I got involved with serving on the board was that libraries pay, play a fundamental role in democracies by offering access to literacy, lifelong learning and information without fees, and they do so in the nonpartisan way. Oh, just the one piece of research here, you know, the, the numbers that Anthony was giving, uh, over ninety percent, that's echoed nationally, over ninety percent of Americans view libraries very clearly. Uh, though, your mission, it's kind of broken for me there, so I can't read it, but, uh, cultivate community belonging, personal growth and, and something else, but you know your mission. Uh, you have, from what I could tell, you have fifteen fixed and, and three mobile facilities. And you have a district funding mechanism based upon property tax, which actually, when you look at how other library, public libraries are funded, often with, through total philanthropy, which is, or philanthropy combined with some public dollars committed. Um, but in those cases, there's much more volatility in revenue streams. So the one thing you have going for you, if even if there are not enough resources, it's less volatile than most, or not, than libraries that are funded through philanthropy and city councils or county commissions. Um, you do have an issue, significant issue, with your budget and revenue increases are limited by the state's, uh, five and a half property tax-driven limitation or taper, whichever is more restricted. So you constantly go up against this, this barrier. So the bottom line in this regard, in, in looking at all the secondary literature, there's not a lot of research, again, that compares libraries or what's at libraries and urban renewal together. But where we did find information and then kind of extrapolating based upon our own knowledge is that you often see library buildings are iconic in nature. So many library buildings are significant in, in the building itself, architecture. And those really contribute to urban renewal, because a lot of times those old distorted buildings are in, uh, urban renewal areas or close to them. Uh, the traffic generation generated by urban renewals, new patrons with additional revenues, revitalizing the urban renewal, revitalizing surrounding infrastructure and arts assets, uh, and then an increased tax base in both the urban renewal area, but also in adjacent areas. Um, on the conflictual side between the two, we have gentrification, replacing one group with another. And, and so often, urban renewal, there is some pushout of that. Uh, they cause changeover in your patrons' needs, programs and materials. So that can cause stress in a library system. And then different social and cultural groups can lead to overall less use in some cases. So just, you know, one of the things we do in kind of looking at different data and creating data, we look at sort of, uh, zones of influence or where are the urban renewal areas compared to the library, uh, your physical libraries that are in town, there are a few more that aren't on the map. And for no, you know, there, there was again, no research out there that says this is your typical draw area where you draw patrons to any physical facility. A lot of it probably has to do with the size of your facility. Uh, but we just drew a one-mile radii around the libraries and compared that with the urban renewal districts. And, um, and, and they really don't seem to, with the exception of downtown, they don't seem to be feeding off of one another or have any sort of synergies or conflict in that regard. So where does the economic contribution come from, from libraries? There, there are three main categories. One is the market benefits I was talking about. So if I go borrow a book from the library rather than pay for that book at the bookstore uh, or online, then I'm getting a, a dollar benefit. You also have program benefits to individuals in society. So this, the training or the English as a second language, adult programs, these things of this nature that benefit both the individual and society in many cases. And then you have more of what we call traditional economic impacts of your business operations. So kind of thinking through those and creating a map, a pictorial map of that. You know, the, the library district is comparable in terms of its employment and its impact and core jobs on the community. It's roughly comparable to, uh, top for rich development, uh, which connects powers to I twenty-five, that urban renewal area. Uh, both can generate construction impacts. So when you build a new library facility, that's a constructive impact. Urban renewal tends to be doing that on a regular basis in urban renewal areas in many cases. Uh, in addition to that, both as I mentioned earlier, impacts surrounding areas, uh, libraries and urban renewal areas. But I think most important today, in, in my mind as an economist, is the most important aspect is really what you're doing with the workforce. And so urban renewal through new housing, um, capacity, increasing housing capacity, both in the inner city and, and other areas. You're adding, you're bringing in and creating capacity to bring new people or more households, more workers into the community to, to support the business sector. The library, on the other hand, focuses on the quality of those workers and the skill sets. And so both of those are very important. Um, so the bottom line in my experience in the last year and the research supports this is that libraries are responding to a period of disruption, as is our most businesses and governmental entities today, caused by technology. And then I add the generational transition, but, and so you can see this in some key metrics, including, um, so from two thousand eight to two thousand nine, looking at Colorado library districts with over a hundred thousand people, we see increases in inner library lending, uh, so making better use of the, the resources, auto, uh, audio media, digital resources, young adult programs and adult programs. So these are where we see kind of the movement in Colorado libraries in general. I won't go into the numbers here, I'll just give you the bottom line, kind of compared Pike Peak Library District to other districts in Colorado with more than a hundred thousand people in their service area. And overall, it, it appears to me that Pike Peak Library District has been moving slightly. And overall, it, it appears to me that Pike Peak Library District has been moving slightly faster. To adapt its business model to tech, the technology, technological disruption that's impacting libraries. So I think that's, that's a positive. Um, in terms of, I think. Revenue per capita, you are at about ninety percent of the average revenue per capita. Of other library districts with a hundred thousand people or more. Uh, so slightly below there. On the other hand, when we compare it nationally in two thousand nineteen. There, the average revenue per capita was like forty five dollars, so you're slightly higher than that. And that goes back to the point that I make where, um, even though it's challenging. And you're facing those challenges now, um, when it's time to go for a vote. On the other hand, there's having, you have, you're more directly in control of your, um. Your future in that regard compared to districts that or public libraries that relied totally on philanthropy. Or of local government. To make decisions and allocate. From the other hand, looking at urban renewal and its performance, here you can see, um. What we did is we indexed it to two thousand eight. So in two thousand eight, everything equals one. And we looked at the change over time and the blue bars there are the overall assessed valuation of El Paso County. The gray bars are the overall, uh, oh, not the overall, the base valuation in urban renewal districts. So of the increments for tax increment financing is above the base, everything above the base. And so you can see here that the gray and the blue are pretty much identical in terms of an index. And that's how the base fluctuates. The base fluctuates along with the county, uh, with the, the overall county assessed values. The orange bars are the increment, uh, the of, um. Or the, for URAs above the base. And you can see that that has increased significantly, and so that's the whole purpose of urban renewal. Is to take something that was stagnant and declining in its assessed value. And incentivize the private sector to come in and invest in it. To uh, give it renewal, to uh, reinvent the urban uh, area. But not all urban renewal areas are the same. So here we did the same thing, we indexed two thousand eight. Uh, equalling one and we looked at projects that have been operating in all the different urban renewal areas. And you can see there are a couple of, uh, what I would call winners. You know, that have exceeded expectations maybe, uh, those are the green lines there, um. And then you have a few in the, the yellow that are after many years are still struggling to get a foothold. And to have the private investment take off. Um, and then you have, uh, the red, which is kind of average in the middle. And so on average over a thirteen year period. Um, we, and then actually this is a longitudinal analysis. So everything started at year one, not all projects have run thirteen years. But, um, on average, I would say you're looking from this data about a three or a four time multiple. Of assessed valuation, okay, and that's what urban renewal achieves. So, and kind of looking, trying to come up with what, with all this sort of background, what are our conclusions? And first of all, it's important that both entities continue to understand one another. And be supportive of one another. The two agencies have the potential to be constructive collabora- collaborators to improve the quality of life. And well-being in the Pike Peak region. Um, and, you know, I, I say that as an economist. That any asset of value, you must work to keep that asset value, else it will decline over time. That applies to libraries, that applies to institutions, that applies to real estate and neighborhoods. And so while increases in population and economic growth are normally sufficient to grow property values. In today's URAs and libraries, that's not necessarily the case. And so, uh, and URAs exist to overcome property obsolescence and neighborhood obsolescence. So, um, and that's the fundamental purpose. For libraries, growth historically led to more resources and expansion of locations, collection staffing. But that's not longer necessarily the case as you're in the midst of this. Uh, technological and generational transition disruption. And the traditional, uh, what I call value proposition of libraries, what's the value? You create and offer to the community is being challenged, right? Not by any body or any entity, but just by forces of, of the market and society. So, uh, so both of you are kind of in a similar boat in that regard. And so we also looked at and said, okay, so what if the Pike Peak Library District received increments? And this question came up earlier. Somebody mentioned about seventeen million over twenty five years, about, about six hundred thousand. Uh, this graph shows we're closer to about one percent. So if the increment from urban renewal was accruing, was going directly to the library district. Your revenues would increase about one percent. But remember, different districts or different urban renewal areas are in different portions of their growth cycle. So, um, so that's where that is and that would be, I think your number is closer to two percent. Approaching two percent, so we could do some double checking to see where the math differs. But, um, so it's definitely one to two percent would be a good, good number. Um, the key fundamentals, you know, looking at the two organizations. Uh, Colorado Springs U R A has a proven track record of successfully encouraging private investment in targeted areas. They've generated a portfolio of tax increment financing projects, some more successful than others. It's train, and on the other hand, the library district is transitioning from bricks, uh, to clicks. And within the bricks or the physical space, they're transitioning from hard collections to e-collections, programs. And meeting spaces and worker spaces, things of that nature. And you're constrained again on the upside due to the state of Colorado a favor. And so just kind of going back, this notion of, we call it the but for constraint. So if it wasn't for the urban renewal areas and that increment, that tax increment financing. Most urban renewal areas may not go forward at all, okay, they would just stay where they are. Um, with no incentive. Furthermore, I think there are other issues that, that you need to pay attention to. So any single tax entity not participating in URAs becomes what economics we call a free rider. Of, not a technically correct, but, but, but of sorts of free rider. By seeking the short-term gains while other agencies are foregoing those gains to try to stimulate, stimulate that renewal. Uh, this can cause a loss of goodwill ultimately if, um, if it's unjustified or even if it's justified. So something that has to be paid attention to. So to try to simplify that or organize it in my mind anyway. We created this two dimensional matrix where on the, the horizontal axis. Thinking in terms of the probable library district revenue growth. In the early years of a new urban renewal project, so kind of what's your three to five year forecast, if you will. Of your revenue growth. And then on the flip side, looking at that particularly U R A project and the probable growth. Of incremental, uh, set values in their early years. And when, and when you look at both of them are high, so high for the U R A and high for the library. Um, the library faces under current conditions, possible state favor limitations. So you may not be able to take advantage of that, even if it were available. And the funds are less needed by either entity because both of them have higher revenue growth. On the bottom right, high revenue growth anticipated for the library, but not for the U R A. You still have the possible paper limitations and the incentives are needed more in the U R A. When you're both in that lower left quadrant, low and low outlook for revenue growth and evaluation growth. Um, the incentives are more needed by the U R A, um, in, in the sense that. With low revenue growth, you're trying to give more incentives to the private sector to go in and make that investment. Um, but also, this is where on the left-hand side, even though there's more justification for trying to. To, um, retain or try to get those revenues if they existed. Uh, you run into the free rider problem on that side of the, the matrix here. So, but when you have, when the U R A is anticipating high growth. And in these early years and you have low growth at your forecast. Then you have, uh, there is a more of an argument for the library district to, uh, look to retain, um. What I would call a marginal incentive, so the, the, the U R A needs a less and you need a more in that regard. Hopefully that's somewhat clear, the, and you look at that and you look at. Again, a forecast of a typical twenty-five year, um, U R A project. And what you have here is you have some outliers on the upside, the ones that would need. Uh, could possibly do well without your incentives. Uh, but those are only the, the gray bars there are only occurring ten to twenty percent of the time. And so it's picking those winners ten to twenty percent of the time. Um, which I think is pretty difficult, even in my profession. And the blue bars are more your typical average. So in general sense, you're kind of in this middle and, and, uh, not necessarily getting the benefit. So we took, we, to kind of conclude it, we took one project, this is the North Nevada U R A. And here we looked at the existing history. And, um, which is the top blue area from two thousand eight through, in this case, we went, uh, to twenty twenty-one. And there are a couple of things to pay attention to here. So the first line is their URAs assessed value. And you can see that has grown from seven point six million to, I can't see it, but just cutting off two thousand eighteen. Thirty-two point one million, so you had that good robust urban renewal occurring there. Um, the base assessed value, which is what you get taxes on, has remained consistent, relatively consistent. And it's definitely consistent with the county in general during that period. Your mill levy, which is up to four mills, um, in, you only realize that four mills. I think in about four out of thirteen cases, maybe five out of thirteen cases. Which implies to me that you're bumping up against the state limits most of the time, okay? And, um, and then finally, that increment or the, the base, what taxes you receive. From the U R A, uh, relative to your overall budget. And I got these budget numbers from, I think, both your audits and, and your, your budgets. And so hopefully they're reasonably accurate, but it's running about, you know, it was running. Uh, ten point one or one tenth of one percent down to now six one hundredths of one percent. Okay, that's what you're getting. Forecasting out, we just continued the same scenario. And, and nothing really changes a whole lot there until you get to twenty thirty-three, when the U R A term expires. Which is the blue box on the right and at that point, you're getting, you jump from roughly mid twenties. In terms of your, uh, receipts, tax receipts from that U R A, you jump to a hundred sixty-five thousand. And so now the question, and it, but it still only represents point three five of one percent. So thirty-five one hundredths of one percent is what that increment is when you fully realize. So I tried to think of that in other terms. And, and I thought this was appropriate, so that hundred thirty-eight thousand increment that you get in year twenty-six. Um, if, if you can think of that like a philanthropic contribution to an endowment. So assuming that you get this contribution. Uh, of half, it would be the equivalent of getting half a million dollars. In an endowment contribution where it restricted, you could not use it for twenty-five years. And then what could you do after the twenty-five years or, and, and that equates to, um, essentially. You're getting a hundred thirty-eight thousand, assuming that continues for fifty years. Is the equivalent of getting a half a million dollar down, contribution to the down. So that may help you think of it in a little bit different context. Um, so looking for synergies and making. And how might an alternative approach be to working in urban renewal areas? And one is to look for synergies in those areas and I think making the library district kind of ubiquitous with urban renewal. As you are with human renewal, I think in many cases, right? And so, um, and so you're just extending that and because there's not a whole lot of overlap now. And there's opportunities to plant yourself in some of these urban renewal areas also. And yeah, just a few ideas here are, uh, perhaps, perhaps you're giving a, your. Is given a preeminent positioning as a partner or sponsor on internet hotspots that might exist in commercial areas. So that's part of the urban renewal, uh. Sort of trade or there's something there that you work with the developers. Or explore being embedded in projects. So having space in some of these, uh, large high-density apartment complexes. Uh, for running the programs there, so extend your physical space outward in that regard. And then finally, I would say successful developers are great foundation targets for your foundation. Um, in terms of making contributions and growth, so that's. So, you know, so I think certainly, that I think the development community in that regard, I mean, again, going back to the notion. That there's an incentive that, you know, and I'll, I'll also make this point, that urban renewal or renewal. And redevelopment, so in the scheme, the scheme of real estate investment. Redevelopment is far more risky than redevelopment. It's very few people, developers are willing to take on. And so the key here with urban renewal is to create the incentive to try to lower the risk, make it more palatable, try to get. Uh, the catalytic sort of, um, fires going, so. Happy to answer any questions, sorry, it's took a little longer than I anticipated, but hopefully it was valuable.
Can I add something real quick? Um, the, the only other thing I'll add, uh, into these, these synergy, you know, these ways that we can work together. One thing the school district eleven has been working through is maybe trying to, especially with some of these downtown developments. How can we get kids in there to see how property management works, how construction works? How do we expose them to some of these industries that maybe work out from that side of the fence too? Tony and I had a coffee and we talked a little bit about that, about, there could be some great ideas, we would, you know, obviously need brains from that a little bit more. But anything that we can do to educate people about these processes or how these jobs are created or how they work. Um, that, that's just one way to work in the school districts, but we can work in other areas with that as well, so I just wanted to have that too.
Questions or comments?
So thanks, Joe, we appreciate your comments and, uh, you know, explaining that's the old idea behind this, provide a, a kind of a background on the process. I worked and be involved in it and I think you've done a good job of providing that information.
Great, well, my pleasure, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone, appreciate it.
You can get, just send me the rest of the material.
Are there anybody?
Okay, any public comments?
There's nobody that signed up for additional public comment.
Okay, so we're gonna take a break right now, since we've been here for two hours. Let's take a ten minute break, I'll be back here in four or after. Uh, consent items, so looking at the minutes of the June fifteen last meeting last month.
I'm going to abstain because I stepped out after the first hour, so I'm just letting you know.
I make a motion that we approve minutes of the June fifteen point two meeting.
Section, okay, move and second at all, if they will say aye. Aye.
Of both say nay. Okay, so we approve. Okay, moving to unfinished business. Decision twenty two seven two interim chief librarian and CEO.
What, the governance committee worked with Tiana on, uh. Actually, we did revise, revise the goals to where they were more time bound, more smart goals. I hope everybody had an opportunity to read them. We did remove some. That we felt as a governance committee that maybe they were not in the plan to be. Expected to reach this year. So why don't we just, uh, you know, not have them for Tiana? So Tiana, do you want to say anything?
No, I mean, I don't, do I have to?
No.
No, you don't have to.
I have to, you know, I'm prepared. I can say something.
So the only thing that I wanted to mention was. And this is really kind of probably a personal thing, is I don't like goals being continued to do something. I'd rather it to be like closing. Yeah.
And then start again.
Correct. So.
That creates the time bound element.
Correct. And so, uh, the, like goal number two, to say implement identified recommendations from the yada, yada, yada. Or.
Just remove the continuum.
Yeah, well, you have to change tenses slightly too, but yes, more or less. And then, uh, goal three was kind of the same thing where it was just engage with community leaders. Um, that was my only comments regarding those.
I would, I would also, again, like, just reiterate. Twenty twenty two, like, is it just the year? I am just putting it out. It's like twenty twenty two.
Are you asking, like, since these are the, like, the title, like, the twenty twenty two goals?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I believe yes, because, uh, we will be, be moving forward to posting the position and doing a, a search. By the end of the year. So I think that we can't go beyond that.
And I don't want to. I'm just making sure that it's clear.
Yeah, it is. They are.
Like a January through December.
Sure.
And, and I, I do want to, um, acknowledge that goal four is a really good goal.
Yes.
So. Because that wasn't there before.
Right, no, I think goal number four is a great goal.
Yes.
Well, and that was one of the goals that we, uh, talked about. Because that was one of the things that she was doing and they're trying to work through, get best practices. And after the, yeah, because I think that we've learned a lot in the process. I know Tiana's learned a lot and I'm sure Randy has gone through a lot as well, but as far as, uh, even us as a board of trustees have learned a lot about what's going on. So I thought that was a great goal myself. Any other ideas? We, I, I don't have, uh, Tiana, if you don't have any questions about, or any heartburn about changing the language, we could change the language and. That's, those would be, we could vote on those as revised.
I'd say we could just, if we disagree to strike that, so just change that and then we can approve as amended.
So is there anyone else that wants to pipe in? Oh, Debbie and Erin. Nothing? Okay.
Debbie's good.
Where's Erin?
I think she probably, yeah, I'd say she was.
It's like nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh.
Fair.
Can I get some money to make a motion so that we can, I can make a motion? Okay. I move that we accept the twenty two, twenty twenty two interim chief librarian and CEO proposed goals as revised.
A second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Also, it's me. Okay, motion passed. So you've got the, so you've got the mark.
Yes. I, I can press it on. So I'll give the language to Laura and she can then take, give them to Tiana. Now we'll continue working on it.
Okay. Decision twenty two seven dash three, the twenty twenty one financial audit.
Uh, hello, board members. Thank you for, for attending time. Just been one busy board meeting.
Just getting started.
Uh-oh.
Keep diving me at it. Go.
She's got her other glass of water over there.
I need a drink later.
So, uh, we did discuss the, uh, the, uh. Audit, um, with our, um, audit manager, director. Who, uh. I'm used to saying B K D, but they've changed their name before this.
Right.
Uh, but for us, it's basically the same folks. He did come in on the twenty ninth of June and we held our internal audit committee meeting and he covered our. Uh, results in the. Several areas of the audit itself in detail. And so I wasn't going to obviously do that. Uh, but I did want to get some high points on this that, uh, obviously we're all interested in. Uh, as far as, um. Their final determination on our, on our statements as presented, uh, were issued a unmodified clean opinion. Which obviously we wanted that and, uh. And that's what they basically delivered. Um, but also in doing that, they, uh. They gave a, a letter, um. At the beginning, I think it was packaged up so that the audit scope and results were at the beginning of the report. I just wanted to mention that as far as audit adjustments, there were no matters that were noted, uh, or reported. We had a couple of unrecorded, uh, misstatements, which they, uh, presented the details on that, but they were considered, uh, not material. The state requires us to, uh, have a published, um, financials by the seventh month, which obviously we're going to do. Um, voting approval on this tonight and then I'll submit it to the state by the deadline. Um, I have not yet submitted the statements to CAFR, um, mostly because I've got a name change with Mike. I need to swap. CFOA. So it's, uh, they've, they've got a recording deadline and I'll hit that one too. One of the high points that I thought I would mention and go over is our net assets, or I'm sorry, our, our. Net position on the district as a whole is twenty one point seven million dollars and that's on, uh. A little over a hundred million dollars in assets and deferred outflows of resources. And of that dollar amount unrestricted, it's eleven point nine million. And that's actually a slight decrease from last year's number. We have a moderately high current ratio and basically current ratio tells you of your current assets, you know, how capable you are. Paying your, your current liabilities. And so that ratio is six point seven to one, which is down slightly from last year, but it's still a great number. For sales. Roughly thirty six million dollars. Or my sales, I'm using talking profit. Uh, our revenue. Yeah, that's just a little back a few years ago. And. The other thing I wanted to highlight was that, um, they do take a close look at, at what our final budget amounts were and for expenditures, we were. Um, within a hundred and. Seventy two thousand dollars of our revenue budget. Uh, we fell short by about a hundred and seventy two thousand, which is actually kind of amazing, I think.
What page is that on?
What would make that off, uh, more than like, oh, I'm sorry, page ninety eight. Yeah, sorry.
Page ninety eight as the report is numbered.
Yes.
Yeah, not the, not as the packet.
Not as a packet number. Yeah, sorry. Um, and then our expenditures, uh, we were actually favorable on our, on our final budget number by, uh. Two point four million dollars and our change in fund balance was about two million dollars positive. And a large piece of that, um, could be attributed to our personnel services, um, budget. Uh, we didn't obviously spend all of our budget because we are still dealing with a, uh. Yeah, a forty or so person, um. Vacant position. Um, I did want to note that in this year, uh, we just finished payroll for, um, this week and. We filled ten more positions this pay period and we probably did five last. So we're actually making some inroads into, uh. Forty plus number for roughly the first six months of the year. And, uh, so I wanted to mention that because while we've seen, uh, favorable movement on our unrestricted in the last two years, I think most because of the. Uh, COVID and, you know, people retiring and having a hard time hiring people. Um, we are starting to see movement towards filling these positions to more of a permanent state and, uh. So I think that's kind of a temporary situation over the last couple of years that, that I wouldn't expect to see that keep continuing to opportunity. I think. Um, the last thing I want to say is I want to thank the financials, uh, the finance staff and, uh, Tiana. Uh, she's not finance staff, but she really did, um. Dig down into this whole process and we, I, I learned stuff I didn't know before and I definitely know she did. And our auditors were also fabulous and working with us on our timeline. We, uh. Took us a little while to nail down the exact dates. We were going to go, um, and finish it, but, uh, they were, they were fabulous and, and they. Helped us with our act for statement, which is the, in what we're looking at right here.
Thanks for any way of the questions or any.
Just thank you for all, all your work on this. I know that's why.
Great job. So is we are a motion to approve this?
Are we just approving the audit overall?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion.
I mean, well.
No, go ahead.
Do you want to read it? Scott, have a. I mean, that the Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees approved the twenty twenty one financial audit as presented.
Okay, all favor say aye.
Okay.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, decision twenty two seven five. This is our foreword. At our last meeting, uh. Aaron recommended that we conduct a pledge of allegiance to our board meetings. So any, any comments?
Oh, it was just the, the nature of, um, we as a governmental body. All the other governmental bodies say the pledge of allegiance. We have a flag here. So I figured it would just be good to add to the. To the agenda. It wasn't. Anything earth shattering. It's just an idea.
For a motion.
There's, that's why I made sure.
Well, it was funny because it's usually right there. And so when this was on the agenda, I was like, it took it out. I was like, oh, no, they moved it.
Precept of habit we are.
I know. Um, I would make a motion to include the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of our board meetings.
Ma'am. Somebody second and then I have discussion.
I'll second.
So curious, I'm considering things that we do to honor and acknowledge our communities in which we live. What about a land acknowledgement then? Beginning of the meeting.
What about a what?
A land acknowledgement.
A land?
Acknowledgement.
What does that mean?
So maybe we can have Shirley explain some of that as an equity, diversity, inclusion opportunity to learn and understand. So. The ground and space that we come from. Is, is something that we need to consider. The past and then bringing into the future, understanding and providing respect to. The land that we. Live on is how I'll summarize that for now. I think that's a bigger, broader question, but just when we think about things like this and thinking about other meetings that I'm a part of that do.
Yeah.
Offer the pledge of allegiance, but also then do honor. Ground that we are living on. Those are all considerations as, you know.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this decision. All favor say aye.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I think, I put that out as a question. So I think that's a, that's a further.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's.
Sorry.
No, yeah, she's just making that as a consideration.
Wanted to amend, uh.
No, because we haven't even discussed what that actually means. So obviously this conversation happened last month and so that's fine. I just needed to understand where it came from. But I also want to address the fact that there are other things that we can do to recognize. You know, things that have happened in, in our country and to be able to honor all and be representative of that. Sorry.
All in favor say aye.
Sorry, Dora.
All favor say nay. Okay, starting next meeting, we'll, uh.
Yeah.
Yes.
If you don't mind, could you please? I've never said aye. I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have a pledge starting in next meeting and each meeting after. Uh, decision twenty two seven dash five, the Penrose Library Parking Meters Management Enforcement.
Uh, that actually would be Gary and Michael right there, but Tiana, but yes. Sorry, Jer, I tripped on it.
I knew it was them. I would be careful. Good evening, everyone. Well, we're almost, uh, done with the, the planning for the new parking system here at Penrose. And with that, we needed to update the, the existing, uh, intergovernmental agreement with the city's, uh, parking enterprise. Uh, the original agreement was put in place in nineteen ninety seven and is attached, uh, is, is attached to the updated memo of understanding that's included in your. Board package. The document reemphasizes the roles of the partnership and highlights that P B L D. Uh, receives the funds collected from the use of the parking spaces and Parking Enterprise will, uh, collect the funds for any parking violations. There's only one minor, uh, revision to the agreement, uh, the original agreement. That's the Parking Enterprise will now. Be the sole authority for enforcing parking violations. Uh, P B L D security will not. Uh, with that, we're asking the board to approve the, uh, the memo of understanding.
So, and I just, I know we had talked about this a couple of months ago. Um, and one of the concerns I had was we didn't talk about anything with employees specifically. And I know that we've had further discussions and the meters would account for some of that, right?
We, we didn't. There is no, uh. You know. Process in place to, you know. Guarantee that staff wouldn't be charged with any violations. The system that we're, we're develop, we developed. Includes an R F I D, which will allow the scanning of the staff I D that will give predetermined amount of time for free. So. So it'll just be, just like with the existing system, uh, meters, they will have to, you know, come out and move.
Sure. But there is, I just want to make sure that we can have that provision available that we're not. That there is a mechanism in place to allow for staff as they're here to not have to. Be charged the whole time as they're here because then that's what they'll have there. And that's, that's really just, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Sure. I have a couple of questions. So I, I'm assuming. Cause I, I, maybe I miss. I didn't see that in here, but the only thing that the city will do is enforce. Correct. We will maintain and everything associated with a, a meter goes bad. Correct. We're responsible as the district is responsible. We have an agreement with the company that is installing these.
We are actually working with them right now, uh, re, reviewing the, the contract right now. Uh, who, who will, you know, provide the, the, the support and, and management of the system. Uh, on the backend of that. So we're actually meeting tomorrow to go over the, the, the contract in detail. So.
Okay, and that is only this location?
Correct.
Okay. What about the cost? Is it going to remain the same? What is it for every thirty minutes?
That's what we're gonna have to discuss with, uh, in our meeting tomorrow as well.
Correct.
I think the suggestion is that we at least increase it to the, the amount that is on the, the streets, correct?
Yeah, the, we, we do, we were required just as an entity to charge something for the lottery because. If we didn't, then no library patrons would be able to utilize a lot or come to the facility because pre-parking at the library, I can park there and go anywhere downtown. So historically, we've significantly lagged behind what the rest of downtown is charging, which has slowly over the years created the same problem. People park here and then just go other places downtown and it creates that deficit in space again. So. So as part of the conversation, we wanted to make sure that we were reserving those spaces. So it was convenient for library patrons to utilize the physical library. But how can we provide some sort of incentive for those patrons to continue to use library without parking? And so with this system, we not only included the RFID reader to make sure that we protect staff to easily continue to interact with the machine and how that protected parking. But we've also included a barcode reader so that library cards can be scanned and given a free hour of library use as well. So those are both included in the contract that's working with the company on so that each library patron once a day with a valid library card will get one hour of free parking to utilize of that library as that incentive. And then staff are protected with that same setup.
That's great.
Okay.
All the revenues stay with the district, right? But if there was a violation ticket enforced by the city, that would go to the city. Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I have the same question. Obviously. We keep any revenue, but.
And that's how our current system.
Okay.
Thank you. That was all I have.
One last question. Towing. Who would be responsible for engaging a towing company to move the vehicles? Is that us?
Michael.
Last question.
Towing.
So towing of vehicles, we do a vendor overnight parking policy within the district and we contract that out. There's a certain process to go through to make sure the vehicle is abandoned. And then once it gets a bunch of tickets, then we do contact the organization to have the.
So we would be responsible for towing of any vehicle in the lot that's left over.
Correct.
Well, that's what I, that's what.
The coordination of removing it, but cost of the towing cost of the vehicle.
Those that I received, what is that? What is that cost? Does that go to the city?
It goes to the towing.
Oh, the towing company, yeah.
It's late.
Any questions? Okay.
Okay.
I hear a motion to approve this.
Thanks, Gary. Thank you. A motion to approve the MOU update for the parking meters. Yeah, that's great.
I moved that the Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees approved the Penrose Library Parking Meters Management slash Enforcement MOU as presented.
I'll second it since I couldn't.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Hi.
Opposed, say nay.
I just had.
Okay, motion pass. I call you in delay.
So this time I believe that's me. This is actually, as it was presented to the Internal Affairs Committee, there were, there, we had no changes to actual policy, but we made some changes to procedures and one of them, all of that is how redlined. So does anyone have any questions? And of course, that's it. But as we've established that even those changes should come to the Board of Trustees for, for your review or so for you to be aware. Yes, Scott?
I just have a question. I didn't see anything in here about staffing shortages.
I think it was in there.
Was it?
I thought I remember seeing that.
Offsite activities now.
Yeah, that, and I, I was, obviously that's not a board item because we vote just on the board policy and procedures.
That's a good point.
But I would think that we would want to, yeah, since we've been running into staff shortages, that'd be a good idea.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just when I read that somewhere.
Maybe it was about. No, that's why when you said you saw it, then I'm like.
I think when we see closures and delays, we just always think about those are all encompassing versus that specifically laid out because that is the reality of the library district. May I ask a question? Because and I don't know the origin of this. It's maybe just my education, but Cabrini Day. Is that terminology or just a reference?
I looked it up. It's a state holiday.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because I had the same question.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Yes, that's a state holiday. Yeah.
Signed in twenty twenty, I think it.
Yes.
I think it does. It, it would be encompassing about staff situations when it, on number two F, it says community emergencies or other situations. Would that include staff shortages or not?
Maybe we just call it.
Say the language that we have covered that, but I think it would be good to explicitly.
Yeah, we will, we will add it.
Or just in parentheses, just say, for example.
Or IE, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, or IE.
Okay.
It seems like that's inclusive.
Yeah. And I'm looking at Michelle here. So and she said she's fine with that. So we will add that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Moving on to reports, Friends of Pike's Peak.
Thirty seconds. The only thing I have to add is literary awards went over wonderfully. We had about a hundred and ten guests. The speaker was very eccentric. I think he had ADD kind of thing. But he was very eccentric, but the people loved him because he was very charming. He'd have like senior moments. Then we heard that he lived in cabins for twenty one years without running water.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So, so that's the only, that was the only thing. Very, very successful. And we did not vote on the bylaws. We still have to do a little bit more work on it. So we'll probably be somewhere before we.
I think just I, I, as always, you guys, the Friends groups does such a great job and like over ten thousand dollars this last month. So thank you for continuing to support the district.
Absolutely. Okay, Pike's Peak Library District Foundation.
Ten seconds.
Hi, feeling, um, now I do thirty minutes.
Because you don't want to eat dinner.
Uh, any questions on the report that submitted? Anyone?
Have you reached out to any builders? Okay.
No.
Developers, excuse me.
So, so I, I, I will address that for just one brief moment. The giving, you would say pie does show that five percent of all charitable giving every year is done by corporations. The R V I is not great on that. So it does not say they're not generous, but, but corporations are in the business of making money, not giving. So.
It's like a private foundation.
Right.
And a non-announced required. Okay.
Yeah, it's just a.
Yes, we applied to the Bill Foundation for a fleet of motorcycles last.
But these grants that, that you guys get, and I do appreciate that you put down specifically for library collections, but what is that really?
So that's part of the collections budget. So it goes to.
Purchasing materials.
Correct, correct, yeah, correct.
Usually when you get grants, and I can't remember all of the ones that we've gotten, but do you specifically call out which, what, what that money is supposed to be used for?
If the funder requires those funds to be restricted, then yes, we set that into, into the designated funds so that we can track those expenses appropriately. But if it's just a general operating support grant, where it's, it just goes in the general.
Thanks.
I just have kudos today, right? Because we've been here for almost three hours. So I'm just going to say, I appreciate your team diversifying the types of revenue streams that you're bringing in and being forward thinking out, you know, outside of the box thinking because as development teams, there's not always that visual or that vision. So I think your leadership is testament to that. So thank you. And the team. We know that you don't do the grant writing, so.
It's all guided by the Gibson, I say aye. I mean, it is, which is where we start.
And to add to that also, just again for everyone that it's very convenient to donate to our foundation. It's on our website. It's just one click and you can make that donation as well.
I do want to say thank you for sending out invites for the Shivers concert is coming up on July first. That's, she is a great donor of the library. We need to.
First one in more than two years, so.
One, but that's there.
Any else? Thanks, Lance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Randy?
More money. We're all about money.
I mean, we got like three hundred pages before.
Yeah, this, this is, this is quite easy to curve.
To the chart?
Winning.
Well, um, it's pretty close to what.
Where do I start now?
Uh, yeah, so from the dashboard, obviously, I mean, it's, it's just some, I'm looking at this thing. It's like, it's like, you know, you know, it just keeps tracking on the cash pretty much the same way every year. It's up, it keeps going up. Property taxes are, are basically where they should be. We had just the comment, because when I saw it, I went, wow. Eight point seven million dollars for June for property tax revenue, which of course we'll collect in July. And then this, it should, as you can see on that chart, it should start slowing down. But I still think we'll, we'll hit our numbers. Spenditures, we are year over year, we're, we're, we're in twenty one, mostly because we haven't done any operating transfers to other funds. There are some of those that need to be taken care of, so. I won't, I'm assuming you guys kind of read through these notes. I, I changed up the year over year just a little bit to adjust it for our budget increases to try to make the year over year more apples to apples. Trying to make that a little easier to understand.
Any issues on the budget that we need to be aware of?
No. Cash is still at twenty four million right now. Like I said, it'll jump.
Is Gary giving you a bill for any construction work that you can do now? Do you know that?
Uh, no, but I, I was going to comment if you were looking at the East and Penrose, the roof projects are very close to being done. So you know, it's just.
That's pretty good. Those guys get paid by the hour. So you know, it's just.
Yes. So, you know, Gary's typical fashion came in on budget and so, you know, they're gotten two roofs done in one year to the one. So kudos to Gary for being able to pull that off.
So we did the east library too?
Yes.
That's great. That's great. I'm, I'm not doing anything. I might give you a hard time here. I'm giving Randy a hard time basically.
But yeah, the, the capital reserve funds for the three main buildings and the capital reserve, we actually didn't have a lot of movement on the, on the bigger ones with all the different departments in it. Um, it's kind of timing probably on the payrolls will come through July. And then cash did change very much for the, one by about two hundred thousand dollars net for the, but still twenty four. All right. That is it.
All right. Thank you, Randy. Anybody have any comments, questions for Randy? I appreciate what you're doing. It's really, you know, stuff working. You're not working near midnight each night, are you? Going over your time now?
Uh. So, yeah, I, I did want to comment. So our, our new controller did start on six twenty four, I believe, on the date, right? Um, she would have been here tonight. She had a, a family thing to attend in Albuquerque. So probably next month I will introduce her to the rest of you, but she's fitting in quite nicely. She's learning great. I've, I've just thrown all kinds of things at her and so she's, she's doing really well. It's great. Good.
Yeah.
Okay, moving to public service report.
Five seconds then.
Five seconds. Okay. Did you all see the summer reading number?
Oh, yes.
Ten thousand. Melody and her team. Yeah, that was pretty awesome, right? From seven. So I, I will keep you. We'll talk about this next time, but I do have two things to inform you of. As a reminder, you know, next month's board meeting is going to take place at High Prairie. So if you want to come early, Liz Willhoff, the manager of that location, is going to be on hand to provide you with a tour and talk to you about the new outdoor space. And that outdoor space grand opening celebration is going to take place on August twenty fifth, I believe. So she is in the process of working with communications on getting that information out. So those are, that's my really short abbreviated. Any questions? One thing.
I do want to comment on that at High Prairie. They're going to have stories at each of those. That's really going to be cool. I do have a question, Scott. How, what time do I need to leave from the west side to get there?
Two o'clock.
I'm serious.
No, seriously, I was going to say about forty five minutes to an hour.
Oh, my God.
Because it just, and it really depends on if, if you leave at four, it'll be fine. But if you leave any later than four, then it's up to.
If you leave at three thirty, you'll get there by four fifty. If you leave at four, you'll get there at five.
Correct. Because that's how long it usually takes me to get up.
I, I mean, I was being serious. Yeah. I, I don't know what the floor.
Take a break in between.
I do want to see the. That was phenomenal.
Isn't it a nice photo? Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Is that Abby Simpson's doing it? It's library.
Yeah.
That's what someone else did. Yes. Okay. I know. There's so many great pictures.
I know. That's what I was scrolling through the other day and wanted to make sure I called that one out. So it was just.
That was a good one. Yeah.
Okay, support services report for communications, facility, human resources. Mission technology. It's, it's all in your packet starting in the page two thirty five. So any comments or questions?
I had a question in the bookmark, the news article that goes out there where that I can, we can get added to that.
I, I think it's an hour entry, but I'll be also more happy to.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Just calling out that partnership with the park behind East. So the, um, just again, just using public partnerships in great ways. So.
Okay, so no comments, moving along. Interim chief's library report.
Okay, so I'm going to give you an update regarding the process of. I thought I could project my voice, but yeah. Um, so we, there were several public sessions held for the, for the input for the strategic planning. So and they were very successful. Also, our online platform that we were getting a lot of responses. So actually, it's very nice to know that community is involved and they want to have a say in the future of the library district. So also we held a community leaders session. It was very successful. And I want to thank Michelle, Tammy, and I want to thank Lance for putting all that together and Laura. Uh, tomorrow we will have a session for elected officials. But also we got an, uh, we got a request from the county commissioner's office. They, they're not available tomorrow because I believe they're attending conference. So they asked if we could adjust and like find another date. Um, and I'm going to say that I was planning also to take the third of August off because I'll be back for my vacation on the second. But I thought, okay, I would sacrifice for the library sake. So then we are holding a session with them for them on the third of August. So they will, and also we're going to open up that session for other elected officials who weren't available or could not attend tomorrow's session and community leaders as well. So we're moving to this direction, collecting all the data. And as planned, the strategic planning committee will meet on the fourth and the fifth, I believe, of August to analyze all the data, come up with objectives and then hopefully to have more to share with all of you in August. I had meetings with some other elected officials, city council, Randy House, Stephanie Fortune, Dave Donaldson. Um, and we provided, actually, and I'm sure if I'm forgetting someone, I want to apologize to those individuals. I tried to check my calendar. I did have to get a job to prepare for that. So, but we especially council members. to prepare for that. So, but we, especially council member Donaldson, he was very impressed with our special collection because we have there our million acquisition as the Gutenberg Library, I believe. And he even took a picture with it, with him and Brett Lovello. So I did tell him that if you post on our social media, you need to give us credit. So I don't know if he did or not, but yeah, those, it was, it was, it was, those meetings were rather successful and community leaders and elected officials are learning or renewing maybe their knowledge about us. So, and now the last point is that we have conducted phone interviews for our vacancy position, for the chief information officer's position. And it was Lance assisted me in this process. We completed all of them today. And our hope is, my hope is to hold in-person meetings for that position the second week of August. And hopefully to have, to have a decision and have a individual to start in your position sometime, maybe in the middle of September, maybe after remaining, but that would be amazing. So, and the last thing that is I notified and let you know before, I will be on vacation starting July twenty-sixth through August second. And while I'm gone, Tammy will be acting interim. Yeah, I almost said chief information because that's me now, but I guess I have a lot of hats, so. But you know, that, that's where we are. And do you have any questions about the report? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Okay, moving to board reports, governance committee.
We did meet. We worked on revising the language for the Tiana's goals. We discussed, we're having the meeting at High Prairie. I'm sure Laura will send us reminders. We also did review and revise the language of the bylaws to reflect the changes we wanted to make to address the duties of the president and secretary treasurer regarding the app being added to the bank accounts because of issues that have occurred. And we're working on the retreat agenda. I only heard from one person that they were not available on August the, October the eighth. Seventh, I'm sorry, October the seventh. They will be there, but it might be, their time might be cut. And we also have begun the process for upcoming vacancies on the board. So those will be posted August.
The posting will go live on August eighth?
August eighth, yes, so.
I don't have the end date in my head, but it's about four weeks later.
Yeah, it's September or something, yeah. So we, so that has gone over to communications to be posted in various places.
Okay, Trump affairs committee.
We did meet and we talked about the parking meter MOU and the closure and delay policies, so I won't talk about that. We also got an update from Tiana and from Randy regarding the consultants' review and recommendations of the finance department and where opportunities for procedural improvements might be. And so they are going to be reporting to the Internal Affairs Committee and the board as they move through the process of implementing those recommendations. Also, there's no rest for the finance department because they'll be starting the budgeting process for next year pretty soon. And so we talked about the plans that they have to try and streamline that process a little bit and also to bring the board into that process in some way, maybe a little earlier, rather than dumping just all of the two hundred pages on our desk and saying, well, what do you think? So I thought that was commendable and we'll, we'll finding more about that later. So that's it. Any questions?
Thanks, Debbie. Okay, now we move to public affairs committee.
So public affairs did meet and we discussed the process for considering the intent to move on to the ballot. And you experienced that, so that's what we.
Trustee update. Any trustees like to tell us what you did?
I actually visited the past library. First time I've ever been up there. No. Thanks to Google. But it's a really nice library and trying to think what else to do. Oh, yeah, my kids and my wife actually went to the Tempest Performance in the park. I can't remember which one it was because there's several of them going on, but they had a great time, so. Thanks to, was that the children's? No, that was.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much. They had a good time. And they got hot, but that's.
I completed my adopted trustee. I visited with the communications department yesterday. And the one thing that I came with a really great nugget, I think, that they do is, I mean, among all the other stuff that they do, it's the kudos of each other at the beginning of the meeting to recognize what the good work they're all doing. And I think that's so important. I thought, man, I should have, somebody should talk to a public school about. But anyway, it was a great meeting and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I learned a lot. Some of the projects that they have going on and they're still understaffed. So kudos to them that they can get everything done with the, the people they have.
All right, thanks, Doris. Anyone else? I, I visited the old Colorado City. First library my wife and I visited when we first got here in five years. And we always said it was a neat place in the heart of town. Anyway, when I, I sent in on the, actually, their weekly meeting is very good. I met everybody. And they get a lot of things going on out there. It's a small library, but they're definitely busy. They rearranged things. Not like when I worked in there, or not worked in there, but visited it for the first time. There's a lot of changes been made and it really is pretty neat. Everybody's all excited about things they're doing. One thing I noticed is, you know, you can no longer sneak up. You know, it used to be with squeaky stairs and whatnot. Hey, here you come. And so, you know, people load it. Now you can sneak up because stairs don't squeak anymore. Thanks to Gary. It fixed that problem, but it's pretty good. So the whole area is pretty nice and I really enjoyed the opportunity to meet the staff there and hear what you're doing and that kind of thing. So it was great.
I feel that also, it's a thing to Gary and I believe we got a donation, right, for that? Anonymous sent them to the house, were able to fix that squeaky stairs. But yeah.
They really did like it.
Yeah, and they, yeah. Okay, anybody else? Okay, on the board president's report, I'd just like to say, there's a lot going on, as you can see. We've only spent three hours here for this board meeting. So we're doing more than maybe we wanted to or needed to, but that's the way it is and here's where we are. And so I want to thank Tiana for the work she's done in this library and making it serviceable to their our patrons and the community. And also for this, this board, because you trustees have made a difference in helping Tiana and this library staff respond in ways they need to, to provide the kind of services and support to the community that we need to, and I really appreciate that, so. We look forward to seeing all of you next, next month when we go to High Plains, High Prairie, sorry. Okay, it's now six minutes after eight and all meeting adjourned.
Hi, Debbie. Get well.
Oh, she didn't well, is that why she?